This conference will now be recorded.
Well, good evening. My clock says six o'clock. Call is made in order. Roll call.
Manson, Templeton.
Here.
Lane.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Menock.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like Commissioner Lane is absent today.
Thank you. Item three, general business. Item three A, approve the planning commission agenda. Any changes or corrections to be made to the agenda? Motion.
I think a motion, we approve the planning commission agenda as written.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side? Agenda has been approved. Item three B, approve the minutes of the planning commission meeting held on November 26, 2024. Any changes, corrections, or additions to be made? Seeing none. Motion?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of the planning commission meeting on November 26.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Abstention noted. Other than Commissioner Manson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side? Thank you. Item three C, disclosure of conflicts of interest. Conflicts regarding matters on the agenda tonight. No one has anything to disclose?
Nope.
Okay. Item three D, disclosure of outside communications regarding commission business. Anyone have anything to disclose?
No.
Okay. Item four, call to the public. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission regarding items not on the agenda may do so at this time. Any presentation is for informational purposes only. No action will be taken, and there's a four-minute time limit. If you'd like to address the planning commission on matters not on the agenda tonight, please approach the podium, give us your name and address. Mike, anybody online?
I don't see anybody online.
Okay, with that, I'll close the call to the public. Item five A, public hearing to consider rezoning requests from R1 to R2.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you noted, there is a public hearing for changing the residential R1 low density to C2 and C2 business general and R2 low density. The applicant has resubmitted information for a rezoning application. This time is asking for slightly less C2, 11.55 acres, and 25.24 acres of R2. It is a 60-acre tract, so there is a large piece that will remain R1, and then additionally, the applicant has included the streamway corridors, or not include the streamway corridors in the rezoning request. So that's why you see the difference is in the, once in the C2 and the R2 application. Also, the R2 tract has been expanded somewhat as well. I'll quickly go through the background. There is no R3 in this application. All the appropriate fees have been paid. The application has been turned in. Notifications, letters were sent to the public, and public hearing notice was published for today, the 17th. Staff has also had several discussions over the last few months with the applicant. Then also, Councilmember Daniels and Mr. Schram, who is also in the audience. And I've met with the neighbors and have had some additional discussions about how to proceed with this potential rezoning. Also, wanted to point out in your staff report, the DeSoto Chamber of Commerce also submitted a letter of support that is included in Exhibit B in your packet. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through the general zoning requirements. We had quite a discussion on a lot of this information last time. And the applicant would like to address the planning commission after staff report is completed. Certainly, the issues remain pretty much the same as far as staff's recommendation it is to approve both of these rezonings. Planning Commission did deny the commercial district last time and approved the R2 and denied the R3. Now, you can see on the proposed zoning tracks, which is in the staff report, it's a fairly significant change in the layout, which also relates to the different sizes of the acreage. So the white areas will remain R1 at this time. The greenish or lime-green color is, will be C2. It still connects off of Kill Creek. Also, City Engineer Johnson and I have corresponded with KDOT and confirmed there will only be one access point granted off of Kill Creek Road. KDOT's actually property ownership extends to the northern edge of this property, so that's right away along K10 and then northbound on Kill Creek Road to the edge of the property. So they do control all access points that could be given off of Kill Creek Road. Also, as you can see, there is a significant change to the R2 district. The applicant does intend to build single-family lots on these homes. One of the information, some of the information that was gleaned, obviously, from our public hearing last time was didn't want to have the apartments, the proposed apartments backing up directly to any of the large-lot homes. The applicant has made an adjustment of that, and also, at this point, didn't want to pursue the R3 at this time. As far as the issues that are most outstanding, still considered, are the lack of sanitary sewer and utilities, and then also the road issues as far as access to Waverly, and then improvements that might be necessary to Waverly beyond just the tract of property that's being rezoned. So there are those indications that, once again, this is a land use issue. We will get into those other issues with preliminary plats and moving forward if the rezoning is approved or recommended to be approved. That's what you will do at this point. Recommended approval. Also, Chairman Templeton, city attorney has provided you a brief, more of a concise way to make a motion to approve or deny this. The city council does want a clear finding of record on this item. So with that, I will stand for any questions you may have. Once again, we've kind of understood a lot of the issues that the neighbors have with this area, the constraints with the sanitary sewer line, and then the roadway network. Well, I guess, and finally, the land use plan is included, the current land use, current, or the adopted future land use plan is included in your packet, which shows this area's mixed use.
Thank you. Any questions for Brad?
Brad, I know that a lot of the folks, the last time this came up, they were concerned about traffic. It doesn't look like we're tying into the same road set. Is that correct? Am I remembering correctly?
Well, it's not, I mean, it still connects to Waverly, but it does, it is slightly different, and that's why that in the northeast corner up there is, I mean, the road configuration is slightly different, but it does still tie into Waverly.
Okay.
Brad, can you kind of go through what would be allowed in the R2?
Well, R2 is specifically for single-family because, or duplexes. So the applicant does have the opportunity to put in duplexes if this is approved, and our zoning code allows you to step down. So if you approve a proven R2, you can have duplexes and single-family. If you approve an R3, you can have multifamily duplexes and single-family. So I do need to take that into consideration, all the uses that are allowed. So we're not, even though the applicant has indicated a strong desire to do single-family homes the way our code is set up, it allows them to potentially pursue duplexes as well.
Are we going to do this kind of similar? I guess both like we did last time? We're going to hear the staff report and then take public comment and then table, or how are we? How's that?
As I under, my, my thinking, Chairman, is that's how we would do it this time. We will, I mean, the staff report's really fairly similar to what it was last time. There's been some additional changes, obviously, the applicant has made, but they'll have to be two separate public hearings and then two recommendations to the city council.
So I think that's probably what we have to do, and that there are two separate applications. Obviously, the staff report has considerable overlap between the two of them. And I'm sure that'd be true from public comments as well, so I'll keep that in mind, but I think we've got to have a public hearing on the first and then the second. The first, at least on the agenda, is from the R1 to the R2, so the R2 would be the focus of the public comment. And then we'll move to the commercial as the second piece. Everybody okay with that?
Okay, and then the applicant would like to address the planning commission, if you're all right with that.
No.
None.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. Just want to be clear.
I'm sorry, just put your name in the record.
Sorry, yep, Travis Schram, Grotta Development, 6300 West 143rd Street. Over in Kansas. There will not be a second staff presentation?
If we do, it'll be a very summary.
Okay. So I, I was going to speak to both applications. I can speak to them both now, or I can speak to one at a time here?
I think it makes sense to speak to both.
Sure.
We'll try to confine the public hearings to each separate part, but we're going to have overlap.
Absolutely, absolutely. I just want to make sure I'm doing the right thing, so. Obviously, we're back for you tonight with some revised plans, and since, since that meeting, we've, we've had dozens of phone calls. There was a neighborhood meeting that we, we did not attend, and there was a neighborhood meeting that we, that we subsequently attended. I think they were very productive. As you guys recall, the primary concerns that I heard addressed was, from the body, was, was buffering, specifically along the east, east property line. This objection is, is a little tough to address because typically buffering is addressed by setbacks in landscaping inside of the zoning district. And so I think, for the sake of linguistics, we kind of framed it up as these are buffering and then transitional zoning, which is two kind of different concepts, but get used a little bit interchangeably. So what we attempted to do was twofold here. We, we tried to get some transitional zoning by reworking the, the R2. And then we, we, you know, contemplated the buffering inside that. And so some of the conversations we had with the C2, on the C2 with neighbors to the north was around buffering and what was appropriate. We spent some time covering, you know, there, it is contemplated in the UDO, the buffering requirements between large-lot, single-family and C2. There's, there's three different ways of doing it. You know, and our, interestingly, our kind of opinions aligned of, hey, there's a bunch of trees there. Let's see if we can keep them, Mike. And then a 40-foot buffer is required if you're not doing a fence, and if we put a fence in, we take out trees, obviously, and that's not ideal. And I felt like with, with at least several of the neighbors to direct north of us, we got pretty comfortable with what buffering would look like as required by the UDO in that district and between those two districts. And I, I think that was, that was a win. The, the, the revised R2, we, we tend to take in the same approach. You know, we, we have a product that we really like, is a, it's in this case, a 50 by 120 lot that we've had great success with building some really quality homes in that low 400s, and that'd be a for-sale product. That's why we, we've gotten there. We've been able to get a little bit more by, by working it around. We, we intend to bring an R3. I think that will come up. We intend to bring an R3 product available, but we're still working on trying to fit that within the new confines, and we're, we didn't want to come back again and say, well, we need to move this line six feet and this line 10 feet, just to kind of frame it in. So we're still working on plans with that. I intended to bring just the commercial tonight because the viability of the project is really kind of anchored in this commercial product, the, the cost of offsite sewer, the cost of road connections, et cetera. But I felt like, talking with the neighbors, they, they, they felt more comfortable if we would have brought the, the R2, kind of that, kind of transitional zoning element, as we discussed, at the same time as we brought the commercial elements too. So that's why I brought them both together. I think, you know, there's three main points here that, that when I look at this spot, that we should be, that we're looking at in the zoning question. And it's, is this the right use, right? This is a land use zoning hearing. And, and the three points are, this is a ma, this is a major interchange with the city. One of the main gateways the city, as it gets termed often, in the, in the, in the comprehensive plan. We're asking for zoning that's approximately 1,000 feet from the, the intersection, which is very typical for, for this area. The, the interchange is on K10 from about 435 to Yudora, range in zones of about 950 feet up to over 2,000 feet of commercial that extends from the interchange of the arterial and the expressway out. So this is very consistent with land use in other areas. It's been vacant. It's been in ag use for, for quite some time, and I believe this interchange was constructed in 1976, and it's, it's kind of been sitting as ag use for that period of time. And it's been in the comp plan as mixed use since 2019, so it, it, we feel like it's time for this, this parcel to develop. As I mentioned before, it's part of the comprehensive plan and not just a shaded color on the comprehensive plan. Its objectives two, three, and five, and the future development and annexation objectives from the comp plan specifically speak to this specific interchange and, and thus this property. And it's called out as mixed use in the comprehensive plan, and, and this particular plan has a land use of, of commercial of about 19%, which is relatively low in the grand scheme of mixed-use developments. And the commercial is needed. I was flipping through the comp plan, just kind of getting myself up to speed on everything, and according, I, I found the statistic kind of interesting. According to the comprehensive plan, and this is the 2021 update, 73.5% of residents surveyed said the city should invest money and incentives to attract new retail businesses. And as we discussed, I think, at length previously, sales tax is a tremendous source of revenue for the, a much-needed revenue for the city. So the primary concerns, obviously, are, are kind of the land use and, and this buffering transitional zoning element we've talked about. And so that we feel like we've addressed that pretty strongly in the, in the R2 zoning. The C2 zoning is a lot harder. That's a really narrow corridor from the west property line to the dotted line that you can see on this exhibit here. That's the stream setback corridor. And you can't put in a single-family cul-de-sac there if you wanted. It gets too narrow, right? And so that's where we think this really is the highest and best use for this particular parcel, and we think it meets the, the comprehensive plan, and we seek your approval. And I'd be glad to stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant at this moment? Okay. Preliminary discussion before we bring the public hearing? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to open the public hearing on the application to request, to consider rezoning requests from R1 to R2. Now, we will do a subsequent one for the commercial properties. Feel free to tell us what you want to tell us. We'll put it in the right buckets wherever it needs to go, but if we could avoid having everybody jump up twice, that'd be great. If you please, wouldn't you have something to say, please approach the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
My name's Frank Whitehold. I live at 8690 Waverly Road. And I'm against any change in population density until the Waverly question gets answered and addressed. We're going to change this interchange. Right now, there is no interchange at Waverly up there. And there will be, and it will change into a key intersection. I, I mean, it's, it's just going to happen if we increase that density. It's going to happen if we put a bunch of R1 in there, which that makes sense. But you're going to have to widen Waverly. Are you going to take frontages away? Or are you going to make it look nice like a Kill Creek in curb and gutter it? Well, if you do that, that's a ton of money. So I, I mean, it's, it's going to be a lot more traffic. So it's got to be addressed before anything gets approved for increased density. It just makes sense. Even if this commercial property goes in and you provide a back door into Waverly, that's increased traffic. So address Waverly before you increase zoning or increase density in zoning. Thank you.
Hi, Sherrell Witt. I'm actually here with the DeSoto Chamber of Commerce. I'm the current, current chair of the Chamber of Commerce, and wanted to come on the behalf of the Economic Council, Development Council, and the Chamber. And I know you guys have this letter in your packet, but I just kind of wanted to read it to you and just let us know, let you know that we have the full support from the Chamber and the EDC for the project on the corner of K10 and Kill Creek Road. We acknowledge this site has posed significant challenges due to its grade changes, the need for lengthy sewer extensions. It has led to it being undeveloped for many years, and Grotta has proposed a compelling solution featuring three distinct components, two of which are under construction at this time. DeSoto, along with the greater Kansas City metro area, is in current need of housing at various price points. The proposed development would introduce a much-needed supply of single-family homes with the purchase price from $400,000 to $450,000. As of November 26, Realtor.com lists only four single-family homes under that $450,000 price point. I think when this was printed, two were under contract. I believe now it's three. I know we just had one go for sale over in Possum Creek for $425. That one under contract in under, I believe, four days. So in addition to the residential component, the inclusion of the multifamily units will help support the long-term success of the commercial element of the project. From the commercial perspective, there is a clear demand for additional retail and office space in DeSoto. And according to LocationOne.com, only two commercial spaces are currently available within that 1,000 to 1,250 square foot, underscoring the need for more space as the area continues to grow, particularly with the expansion of Panasonic facilities and the workforce coming that direction. We are enthusiastic about this project, and it addresses key housing and commercial needs while also being aligned with the 2022 comprehensive plan and designates this area for the mixed-use development. The thoughtful planning of this project positions it as a valuable asset, both to DeSoto and the region as a whole. As the area continues to grow and thrive, we ask that you approve this development to provide certainty to the developers and the broader development community. Your support will help ensure that DeSoto remains a vibrant and growing community. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you.
Neil Parker, 8940 Waverly Road. I strongly, I'm in the development business myself. I do the construction and the development. I'm not a fan of leaving that R1 undesignated. I know that's not part of the application, but most of the developments we do that needs a comprehensive development plan for an entire parcel. I get the diversion or, you know, doing the different areas. I'm not a fan of the R2 concept because I think that can be turned into rental very easily, and if being in construction, building a $400,000, $450,000 house is extremely difficult for somebody to make money without turning that into a rental, my opinion. But I would not be opposed to seeing apartments in that R1, remains R1 area to generate revenue. I'm like the C2 area, but having 50-foot with lots in that area, I think you're underestimating the value of what somebody would pay for lots with those contours if they were 100-foot wide. I believe you could have some good revenue based off a full-size lot for the eastern half of those R2 lots. I get the concept of having the R2 lots kind of on the western half-ish, kind of where the draw would be there for the, the drainage area, the natural contour backing up to the C2. But I'm not against the C2 at all or the area of it, but I think we really need to entertain before the R2 gets approved, what is going in the R1 area and looking at redoing the R, some of the R2 lots to R1. I live at 89 and Waverly. If my property backed up to what could be a 50-foot wide rental unit for $400,000, and I'm paying, you know, my house is worth 800, it, not my particular house, but I know those houses are worth 800 to a million dollars, I'd be throwing a fit. I don't think anybody with any asset would have an intelligent decision about having somebody's property that backs up to them that's worth half the amount of money. There's a way to rework this. I don't understand who's laying this out. There's, there's better ways to lay this out to make people happy. The R2 that's coming down along the eastern, I understand that's probably going to be backing up to apartments, but you can use landscaping, buffering, and trees to buffer that better and make those R1 lots and full-size lots. I do development in Lenexa. A $200,000 lot is not out of the realm. Don't sell yourself short in DeSoto because you think we're trying to hit a price point. Let's get some diversity on these 60 acres. Don't sell yourself short. We need revenue. I understand that. We need road repairs. I understand that. I look forward to what this is going to look like in five years, but let's do it right. We're getting there, but this is not quite right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bill Coppin, 8488 Waverly Road. In my opinion, you know, the couple of the main goals of a city government are to protect its citizens and to protect our property values. And I don't think this development does either of those. I don't like the fact that we can come in here later with an apartment complex that's not on here tonight. And then you're going to, I live on Waverly, and we bought on Waverly because of the feel of Waverly. You know, all my neighbors are on, I'm, we're on one acre. My neighbor's on three, five, 10, 40 acres across the road. It has the feel of what I think a lot of people moved to Waverly for. If I wanted to live on what you guys are proposing, I would have just bought a house in Lenexa. I mean, I drove down K7 last night to get a feel for what K7 is as it goes through Alata at 5:00. Took me 17 minutes to travel six blocks. We're turning into Alata. And that's fine. If that's where we all want to live. I want to live in DeSoto. And I should have bought here 40 years ago, and then I wouldn't be so pissed. But you know, and I just don't think that that development meets those two requirements of protecting our citizens and protecting our property values. And yes, I'm biased because I live on Waverly. I didn't buy on Waverly to see you guys turn it into a B highway. And that's what it's going to be when this is all said and done. And then you're going to take out all those historic cedar trees. You're going to take out all my trees on the, you know, that border the street on my property. And I'll be living in Alata. Again, nothing wrong with Alata. But I don't want to live there. So that's my, you know, it's the old, you take five pounds of horse increment, stuff it in a one-pound bag, wrap it with a bow and call it Christmas cookies. I don't think this is right for DeSoto. I don't, you know, I under, the developer says, "It's time to develop," as well. I guess. But surely, there's a better plan than this. And I think leaving it open-ended to jam in a 700-unit apartment complex is not the way to go. I understand there's restrictions, and we have to get people in and out, but I just don't think that this is right. I've talked to almost everybody on Waverly Road, and they all feel the same way. So although I'm here unofficially for them, here unofficially for them, I do represent the main feeling of Waverly Road. So I appreciate your guys' time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing. Anyone who would like to address the planning commission can address the podium. Give us your name and address. Mics, anyone online?
Nobody online.
Okay. Well, I suggest we close the public hearing on this application from the R1 to the R2. And is it your pleasure to talk about that? Or would you like to go to the public hearing for the second resounding before we have a combined conversation? It's up to you.
I would, I would vote we just move forward, and we have one discussion.
Okay. Any objections?
No.
Okay. So with that, I would like to open the public hearing on the resounding request from an R1 to C2. Anyone who has additional comments to be made with regard to that, obviously, we certainly understand the comments have been made with regards to traffic, Waverly, the condition. You know, those, those comments, I suppose, probably go into both buckets. If there's anyone who has specific comments as to the C2 that they'd like to add, now's a great time to do it. Please approach the podium and give us your name and address. Still no one online?
Still no one.
Well, I'd like to close the public hearing on the resounding request from the R1 to the C2, and the matter is now before the planning commission. Comments, questions, concerns?
I kind of came into this meeting expecting to be a whole lot more voices up here compared to the last time, but I'm looking at the comprehensive plan and the future land use. I did notice a lot of that stuff around to the north and to the east showed medium-density housing, which it's not. So I was a little concerned with that. I've kind of taken a look at the interchanges from K-7 to Udora, what all has been put around those, and a lot of them is commercial and stuff. But this interchange is actually kind of unique in the fact that it's got the large-lot housing right up next to this. And I didn't see any that were similar to it. It's kind of a unique situation. The compatibility factors, a lot of them are pretty much the same. Nothing overwhelming. Kind of neutral to the deal. So, like I said, I was expecting a lot more vocal opinions on this. Those were, of course, still the traffic and stuff like that, but that's not actually pertaining to zoning. That would be on any item that went in there. That's kind of where I'm at.
There's 23 acres that are going to stay R1 as it sits now. Do we know what the breakdown between the three chunks of R1 are? I mean, that's obviously not up for discussion right now, but I was curious. There seemed to be some concern from the residents about leaving what I assume is the bottom portion, R1. I can't imagine there's enough room to put anything in the, the upper and far-right corners there. So I'm assuming we're talking about the bottom quadrant there.
Yeah, I don't have those numbers for the R1, but the intent of the two northern, or the northern R1 and the, because the northeast R1 is to remain vacant. There's, those are down in the draw.
Yep.
So they're really undeveloped tracks. And even the previous plan that the developer brought forward showed a good majority of those areas not being developed, even though they were part of the zoning district. So at this time, they really are undeveloped tracks.
Okay. The question I was ultimately trying to get was, Brad, don't run away. You know, that's 23 acres minus whatever's there and there. That leaves whatever's remaining, some, some number less than 20 acres. How many apartments could you possibly fit in there? Any ideas?
Well, our max is 24 units an acre. So in theory, if you could somehow squeeze all of that in there, as you can see, there's also a stream bed in the east, pardon me, the western part of that remains R1 in the south. Plus, you've got, you'll have a fairly significant landscape buffer between the R2 and the potential R3. So there, there will be, you know, a shrinking of that size as well. Plus, typically, we require a clubhouse and some amenities and trails, things like that. So.
Got it. Okay.
Brad, essentially, this, to meet the city standards and build the 50-foot lot, what creates the need for this to be an R2, as I understand it, is that?
Yeah, it is. And that's why the next agenda item is also back before you. But that's the way the code is written as the application was submitted. So that's what we're presenting.
Well, on that point, you couldn't build duplexes on 50-foot lots.
No, not 50-foot. They have to go to 60.
The concept of the 50-foot lots is basically for single family.
That's correct.
So.
Has, has there been any discussion about the possible changes coming to our zoning classifications that would?
With the developer or?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did talk about that, but they wanted to proceed with the R2 at this time. And I guess I can let them answer more specifically. But they thought they had, as I mentioned earlier, a very strong desire to do single family.
But once we, if this R2 rezoning is approved, we're not, we're not really approving 50-foot lots.
No.
So.
No, they'd be anywhere between 50 and 60. But if they were, yeah, like I said, this chairman brought up, it is a 60-foot-wide lot. So they are bigger for R2 or duplexes, pardon me.
Either way, they'd have to come back with a site plan that's going to be.
Yeah, the preliminary plan will show those differences.
I guess on that point, and I'm glad you brought that up, because to me, in order to actually develop this, you're going to have to come back to, to planning commission with a site plan. And the site plan at that point is going to trigger your traffic studies, and it's going to require them to do whatever is going to be necessary for Waverly to handle this traffic. Now, obviously, you're going to have to have your sewers are going to be there, and that's going to be a lot bigger question for everybody else. So those, those things will be addressed when those come up. The rezoning of this, those factors are relevant, but they're not necessarily determinative because they can zone it. And if they never get the traffic study done, and they never do the necessary improvements to the roads or get the sewer there, it'll stay the way that it is until somebody else buys it and tries to come up with something else with it, if I'm understanding correctly.
That's a fair assessment, exactly.
So I, for what that's worth, I mean, our issue is zoning. It's land use. And is this an appropriate use? And I mean, from my perspective anyhow, I appreciate the fact that you came back and gave some transitional zoning and the threat of potentially having five-story apartment buildings looking into somebody's backyard that's got a large-lot house, totally bought that. And this, I think, ameliorates that. So I appreciate that. And I think you're, you're to the point. As far as whether I feel like we as a planning commission say, "Well, you know what? That eastern section would be better served if you did R1 versus R2." As much as the city may be charged with trying to protect everyone's interest in all this, we're also aren't in the business of telling people how to use their property. And so we can't really do that. But we can say whether or not we believe it's going to impose, be imposing upon the neighbors. And, and I appreciate the transition. I think that's, that's a much better solution than what we saw before. So at least, that's my view.
Yeah. Sorry.
That was going to be my comment. I do appreciate the feedback that we received from everybody last time was that conflict with the apartments avoiding the eastern edge. It's an effort to transition that. So I appreciate that also.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to piggyback on just about everybody's comments here. First one, I, I do want to thank the applicant for, you know, going back and meeting with the neighbors and, and coming back in with an revised plan that tries to mitigate some of those concerns the best that, you know, you, you can. I did a lot of looking at the comprehensive plan this past weekend, and same thing, I went over and looked at some of the intersections that Commissioner Schultz was talking about. And those interchanges, the one at Udora and, and, you know, Church Street and K-10, you know, it is kind of transitional from commercial, higher-density residential into, you know, the single family. The one that I do want to point out is the one at Lexington and K-10 in our own hometown. It has the same transition, commercial, higher-density residential into, there is a street with large one-lot homes that butt up to a similar situation to what this is. And it is thriving. I mean, it's, I mean, house values are not declining. They're actually, I, I did a little research on this myself. I went from tax values of 2018 till now, and they rose the same amount that the neighbors. And again, I, I think, you know, this plan, this track of ground is shown on the future land use plan, mixed use. It's, it's in line with comprehensive plan, future land use plan. And I'd be for it. Staff has gone to golden criteria, and their recommendation is for approval, and I would be in line with their professional opinion. And again, to piggyback on Commissioner Timlin's comment on, there is future meetings that the applicant will have to submit studies, traffic studies, site plans, that will have to be reviewed by the public again. So there is, you know, more meeting time that will be needed to make sure that we are minimizing the impact to the neighbors. And we are following the zoning requirements that are set in place to minimize impact to the.
I'm sure it's no surprise to anybody that winning public support and getting to the point that you can approve Waverly Road to do this, kind of handle this kind of traffic is going to be a challenge. And I'm sure you're up for it, and I'm sure we'll have to deal with it. But I don't think that's an issue of the zoning before us. I think it's, it's, the reality is that it's, the question is, is it an appropriate use here? And if I'm asking myself that question, I think it probably is.
I agree.
Any other comments? Discussion?
It is a better plan than the first one.
Well, if we're at a point that you would like to entertain a motion, there is some suggestive language for that motion that was invited by council.
Two separate motions, is that correct?
Yeah, we need to do two separate motions. The first one would be for the R1 to the R2.
I'll make a motion to adopt staff's recommendation to approve the applicant's request from R1 rezoning to R2.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Patrick, we go with the form of the motion.
Yeah, I assume from the motion, you're agreeing with the staff report, his analysis of the criteria.
Correct.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Manson?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Huggins?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Medoc?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next motion would be appropriate for R1 to C2.
I'd make a motion to adopt staff's recommendation to approve the applicant's request for rezoning R1 to C2.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Medoc?
Yes.
Milburn?
Yes.
Huggins?
Yes.
Templeton?
Yes.
Manson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And thank you all for coming. Thank you for your comments. Moving to item six, old business, we have none. So moving to seven, discuss R1A zoning districts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we had talked about our, our code and lot widths, as I've mentioned, I believe, was at the October meeting, the staff report. We don't have any R1A zoning districts in town at all or that are active. And so when we made the change to the R2 and the R3, overlooked and did not include any changes to the R1A district. And so I think it's appropriate that we, if you can do a 50-foot-wide lot in R3 and R2, it ought to carry through to the R1A. We would leave the R1 alone, and it would remain the same. So this is just talking about the R1A, which is a residential moderate density district. So I have suggested some language. I know we did talk about it at the October meeting. City Council asked that the planning, planning commission reevaluate their discussion from the October meeting and make a recommendation to the city council regarding the R1A. One thing that is a little bit different about the R1A district is it does have an open space requirement that the R2 and the R3 don't have. And I've suggested some language about the lot widths. If you're going to the 50-foot-wide lot, you will be required to have the 10, remain to have 10% open space. I also added, it must have some sort of dedicated amenity. So we can't just use, you know, floodplain or floodway areas as your open space. Well, you can, but there needs to be some sort of a trail, a playground, something along those lines. And then also, if we want the developer to stay with the R1A, man, I did talk to Mr. Schrom about this, is reducing the square footage, not the width, but basically the length of the lot by reducing the rear setback by five feet, the front and the rear setback, and reducing the lot size to 5,500 feet. My thinking is, and then Chairman Temple and I did have a discussion about this, if we want somebody to stay with the R1A and not, you know, use the flexibility in the R2, we need to give them incentive to have a bit of a smaller lot. I don't know that the five-feet difference is going to make much of a change in the overall appearance, layout, or the activities that the homeowners might have by that reduction in the lot. Also, the 50-by-100 lot has been adopted by some communities. And I wasn't quite ready to go that far, but I do think it's a discussion item that the planning commission needs to have. And this is basically to get the ideas from the planning commission back to staff. I do have a public hearing scheduled in the January meeting on this topic. And as I'd mentioned, city council would like a recommendation from the planning commission on this item. And we've talked about it previously, and, but I do think it's important, at, at the very least, that we have a consistency between the three districts that could potentially have 50-foot-wide lots. So that with Mr. Chairman, I will answer any questions as best I can.
Thank you, Brad. Questions for Brad?
Yeah, I guess it's a little clarification on that 5,500. I'm just, so that, that'd be 110-foot-deep lot, right?
Right. And right now, it's 6,000 square feet, so it's 50 by 120.
Okay. So then if the developer decided to go with that, they would have to do the open space dedication?
Yes.
Okay. So if they went with the 50 by 120, they wouldn't have to do that? You're leaving it up to them to decide?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, actually, no, they would still have to do that.
They would satisfy it by cutting down the size of the lots.
Oh, I got you. Gotcha.
My two cents, which I shared with Brad and I've shared before with you guys, is that I, I think creating density in subdivisions and greenfield development, to me, creating density in subdivisions in greenfield development, to me, is not the right thing we ought to be encouraging. And I, I'm not a big fan of encouraging this kind of a dense development for single-family. I can get it, I do understand it with, with the single-family, that the R2, I think there's a role for that. I can understand why somebody might wanna do it, in, in particular to have duplexes and that sort of thing. But my concern is this is going to be used areas outside the core of the city for people that are just gonna squeeze in as many as they can. And I think the ultimate value to the community of having a reduced price for those houses isn't gonna materialize. They're just gonna squeeze more of them into it, and that troubles me. So I'm not a big fan of the R1A. I don't even know that I see necessarily a role for it. I think that the R2 is an option, if they wanna go that way, they can do that. But, you know, if we're talking about trying to use the R1A to encourage a more affordable housing stock, the 10% open space would encourage anybody to use R2 anyhow, so why would they ever use R1? They'd just do it R2. That's my view, in which case I think we're not really helping things by doing anything. I don't even know why we have it, but that's me, one voice.
I just, I just think the R1A just, it hones it into having single-family. The developer so chooses to do a 50-foot wide lot, it'll hone it in, they don't have the option to do duplexes.
But I thought, didn't we just say that 50-foot wide lots would pretty much inhibit in R2 the ability to do a duplex? Didn't we just? Yeah, you'd have to do single-family through a 50 feet, but you could do a single-family R2 at 50 feet. So we've got a limiter on lot size and a limiter on zoning. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand your point.
If you're R2, you could do some of the 50-foot single-family and you could do some of the 60-foot duplex lots. So you'd have the ability to do both.
That's right.
This would strictly limit you only to a single-family.
Okay. So you couldn't get duplexes there. Okay, that's a good point.
Right.
So that's to add a bonus, this is that right there.
Okay.
So I like that. Not saying I'd do it, but like, some of the concern was that duplexes would be put into this R2, right? So if somebody wanted to only eliminate that option.
We would just say R1A?
R1A.
Okay. Because technically, that wasn't a site plan, that was just really.
Surrounding.
Yeah, okay, that's fair. Okay. Good point.
And then again, I, I know I harped on this last time, but if, as long as attention is allowed in that open space, I would be in support of that 10%.
Well, if you're worried about it, just go R2, because you don't have to do it.
Detention?
You don't have to do the, you don't have to do the 10%.
You don't have to do the 10%, you would still have detention issues that you have to meet.
Who's ever gonna use the R1A, is my point.
Well, I guess. Well, I guess, as Chairman, that's what we discussed, that's why the incentive for the smaller lot down to 5,500 could potentially trigger them to want the R1A. And then also, I feel like it gives them a little more flexibility to find that open space as well.
They could.
But this is kind of a.
Opinion on it.
This is kind of a six of one, half dozen of the other, it's just.
I do have a opinion on that.
Yeah, I'd love to hear it, yeah.
I think Roger's question is really good. Why would anybody do R1A over R2? As for the very reason that we just kind of went through as far as zoning goes. I mean, I, I've got a, a single-family R2 development in Olathe, I've got a single-family R2 development in Leewood, I have a single-family R2 development in Olathe. And every single time we zone it, we go through the same question, well, you're gonna do duplexes on there. And it's like, well, no, it's not our intent. We, we generally come into a city with a, hey, this is what we're gonna build, right? This is the lot size, we think it works, we've done our market studies, we, we've done our research. And then we kind of figure out what zoning district we, we do it in, right? And in this particular case, we brought in a 50 by, I think we, we, we have done traditionally a 50 by 115. This is a 50 by 120, which didn't really mess with our site plan much, so we've moused it out. But we went through a lot of headache in, in this very setting of you're gonna do, doing to do duplexes. And, and I think the 10% open space bit is by the time you grab BMPs and any kind of buffering you need, you're gonna get it. I mean, that, that's just my detention and whatnot, so anyway.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me speak.
We've heard from a developer, said he'd use it, so. So that we're not voting on this, this is just discussion. This is for discussion. Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I think Brad was really looking for the rubber meets the road of the suggested changes. We have R1A on the books.
That is correct.
So apart from my philosophical problem, I think he was looking for some actual feedback.
You know, I would, I would think there are situations where you do need a, a smaller lot and more density to, to create a good transition between commercial and, and other uses in the traditional single-family. And I would, I would think it would be more acceptable to the neighbors, you know, especially R1 neighbors on single-family lots, to know that this is gonna be a little denser because of the transition space, but it won't be duplexes. Duplexes may not be as, duplex may not be as bad a word as it used to be, but there, there was a time when you didn't say that word.
Not in Johnson County.
Yeah, I mean, it was automatic rejection if you said that word. I, I think it does provide, you know, a, a little bit of opportunity to create the kind of transitions that are needed in some areas.
Mark, are you comfortable with the suggested changes that Brad's put out?
I am.
Any other comments to share with Brad?
The only thing that's a little, like, a dedicated amenity, right? So is it like, should I just dedicate like a little park shelter or like a?
It makes sense.
One slide or, you know what I mean, like, I don't know how you quantify the value of what that has to be, but like, I don't know.
So I mean, also, I just wanna say, I mean, when you start putting that in there, somebody's gonna have to review those amenities.
I guess it's kind of silly, but I mean.
I know what you're saying, Brad. I, I guess I didn't wanna put in something very specific. It needs to be a tennis court, a basketball court, a playground, you know, pickleball, you know, a swimming pool, whatever it may be. So I just wanted to make it clear, because yeah, there will be other members of the planning staff that'll review these. And it'll be between the developer and city staff to say what's an appropriate amenity.
And that's determine the site plan enforcement.
Well, and it's gonna be a preliminary plat.
Okay, so that'll have to come through this body?
Yes, it will come back. And then ultimately, you would decide whether that amenity is enough of an amenity, you know?
Great. Okay, can we get you what you needed?
Yes, I appreciate it.
Any further comments?
Nope.
Okay. So I believe that concludes our agenda for tonight. I guess, if you guys have any other comments, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Entertain a motion? Motion adjourned?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.